This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, good evening, and this is the May 17th public hearing for the budget for the FY 2023 school year, and we are going to roll call in. So Shannon?
Shannon Durham here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Maren? And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, so we're going to begin with the public hearing and public speak portion for the budget. And I'll keep an eye out for Lori. I do not see anybody else here from the public, but I'll keep looking. So Dale, do you want to go over the budget again and the budget changes? Here's Lori coming.
I think if you want us to do our presentation now, I can't remember if we did that last time.
We did.
I think Maren started with a few opening comments, and then I did some PowerPoint slides, and then Dale did some specific nuances of the budget. Maren, did you want to say anything to start, or I can jump right in?
I mean, I'll just say that the Finance Committee reviewed the budget. We certainly went through really deep analysis of it and had multiple conversations, really good review of teaching positions specifically at the elementary level, how affected class sizes, just a number of places that we needed to sort of dig deeper to make sure that what we were putting forward as a budget really met was aligned with what our school values and goals were. And so that felt, I felt like we came to a really good place out of those conversations, trying to balance what was, what has been a difficult budget season for the past number of years with what we needed to ask now, even in light of some really high jumps in terms of our transportation and tuition costs, those sort of fixed costs that Dan will touch on, but as far as I understand, we're happy to be able to say that we did come in with what our projections were now that that transportation contract is in place. So, but we can talk about that more later. But I think that those were some really big pieces about us developing this budget and ultimately got to a place where we felt we could be confident as a school committee, even then with the information we have, and even more now so as we forward, go forward with this second round of review of the budget and approval. But the Finance Committee did approve it in full with 3-0 vote, and certainly encourages this to be moved forward to the City Council and to the mayor's office.
Okay, and Cindy, if I can use the screen?
There you go, you're all set.
So just to thank Dale, we wanted to just get Dale back here to do this one more time. So because it's our last time going through this, so we wanted to do over. So I'm going to show you a few slides tonight. Nothing has really changed since a few weeks ago, and I know that you have this presentation. And I'm happy to stop along the way if people would like me to, to address any questions that we didn't address the first time. So just a historical look at our budget over the last few years. So in FY 21, you can see we had about a $23 million budget from the city when you include the required minimum, which is a combination of the city share that's required in the Chapter 78, and then the city of East Hampton has gone above that with the cost share and the expenses that are included in the net school spending agreement. And then in FY 22, our budget was impacted, you know, because of, I think, COVID and a lot of different factors. And so the budget was 22 million, 22 and a half million. This year, the required minimum for the city to provide to the school department is 21,391,869, which if you look reflecting back on the last two years, I think you'll see that the city has surpassed that amount in the last two years. You'll see, if I could direct your attention to the second line, the Chapter 78, it has gone up a little less than 300,000, about $250,000 from the state. That's the governor's. Chapter 70 state aid, I believe it's higher in the Senate right now, a little bit, not much, but in the city share is factored by the, at the state level. We're presenting this evening a needs-based or essential services budget, and these are the factors that we considered. The budget tonight is a proposal that reflects the needs and the priorities as identified by the district in alignment with our goals. It's a budget that seeks to maintain or improve the level of services provided to all East Hampton students in FY 23 as compared to FY 22. It's a budget that includes costs that are known or projected based upon current information, and it's a budget that results from a consolidation of four schools into one, identifying some efficiencies and a realignment of needs as indicated from the building's inception years ago. So some cost savings that will occur due to the consolidation. We'll have less building maintenance expected as we move from four very old schools to one new school, less frequent building systems and equipment breakdowns and need for repair. We won't have to have as large a contract service maintenance contracts as we do. The expense of parts that are very old is very difficult in emergency response. We hope through the efficiencies of this lead building that we'll have lower utility costs in electric and heat. There'll be some grounds maintenance savings, again, going from so many different sites to one site. A potential for food service savings, which is out to bid and came back, and we did settle that contract, and I think there was about a $50,000 savings that we saw, Dale. Some custodial supply savings and reduced plowing and trash removal expenses, which is budgeted on the city side. Here's a diagram of our enrollment. I highlighted a few numbers for you as I went through this today. FY 16 was a high of 1,523 students in the district. And then in FY 21, which is the September, right, you know, in the midst of COVID, we were at our lowest, 1380, and now we're at about 1421. I mean, now we're at 1428. We're anticipating to be at 1421 next year. Some numbers, I did change one number on this chart if you're comparing it to the presentation from last time. Under the kindergarten, I had 80 students anticipated, we're up to 81. So I'm being optimistic in saying maybe about 85, which is still in line where we thought we would be. The other grades, the numbers have not changed. And so here is a list of the proposed reductions that are identified in this budget that we're putting forward. One school administrator going into Mountain View, there's a reduction there. Also, one administrative assistant at Mountain View, that's again going from the three elementary schools into one large building. An administrative assistant, a 10-month person at the high school. Three elementary classroom teachers, no teachers will be losing their jobs. We did have one resignation, and I believe we have two staff members that are, that are one-year leave of absence people. One elementary music teacher that is, she's been here since January, she's a long-term assignment for a leave of absence. Two lunchroom monitors, not a leave of absence for the elementary music teacher, I'm sorry, someone resigned in mid-year, and there's a substitute in there. So when she leaves at the end of this year, no one will lose their job. Two lunchroom monitors, 9.2 paraeducators, they'll become professional staff positions. We are anticipating right now that that might end up being about three people that are actually going to wait on assignments because we have some open parapositions now that people will just flow into. So 9.2 sounds like a lot, but 9.2 people will not be told at the end of this school year that they don't have a position in the fall. There's a lot of moving parts in paraeducator positions, and people leave the district all the time. We're losing a halftime custodian, and we're changing one of the current custodians to a groundskeeper. And one LPN is retiring, and that person will not be replaced. We have an RN instead. New positions, the middle school librarian will come out of an ESER grant into the budget. An elementary school librarian will be grant-funded. A preschool teacher will be shifted from elementary paraeducator funding. A special education teacher shifted from elementary paraeducator funding. 1.5 speech language pathologist, which is shifting from an outside contract. One science STEM teacher, which would be grant-funded. One social emotional coordinator, grant-funded. One high school adjustment counselor, grant-funded. One Title I paraeducator, grant-funded. And one instruction technology technician, which is also grant-funded. Speaking of grants, I think it's important to have a snapshot of our grants picture. Some of these numbers are just estimates based on this year's figure, so we don't have the information yet on the exact amount. Sped 240 grant is generally about half a million dollars. That funds actual teaching positions, and it funds some out-of-district tuitions. Title I funds three reading positions in the district. Title II funds the literacy instructional coach and mentor stipends. Title IV funds tutoring, supplies, professional development, some materials. ESER III will fund staffing, services, supplies, I'll get into more specifics. Circuit breaker funds out-of-district tuitions for some of our special ed students. And our revolving accounts, including school choice, funds staffing and transportation costs. The FY 23 and FY 24 ESER III obligations, about $1.5 million of that 1.6 goes towards staffing. And there's a list of the people that are funded out of ESER III dollars. It funds about $85,000 of professional development and about $56,000 of supplies, materials, and online subscriptions. So the budget looks like this. In FY 21, our budget was 17.5 million. In FY 22, it was 17 million, 17.1 million, which was a decrease of about 2.5%. And this year, our proposed budget is 18,450,907, which is an increase of 7.91%. And the components that make up that figure are down below. The tuition is approximately $500,000 of the $1.3 million that we're requesting in addition this year. About $500,000 is transportation, that's a fixed cost. It's an intended cost that we knew was going to happen when we moved into the new school. And everything else fixed and discretionary, like our utilities things like that, goes into this category, and that's $359,000 for a total of 1.353214 million, or 7.91% increase. And just to give more information, we can see the cost of the operating budget on the top line. And then if we add in the grants and circuit breaker and our revolving accounts, our district budget is 22,325,460. And I'll stop my share here. And Dale, do you want to add any details, or if people have questions, or Dale, or I, or Maren?
Just a couple of points, maybe three points, all of which I mentioned last time, and you'll probably remember, but just as a reminder. One is that looking at the locations, you've got a location summary in your budget packet, looking at the locations year to year is near impossible this year because, for an apples-to-apples comparison because of the consolidation. Specifically, services and staffing that had previously been budgeted in either the district budget, because they were shared among the elementary schools, or the special education budget for the same reason, have now been moved into the Mountain View if they serve the pre-K through 8 population. So it throws off the ability to compare year to year, the system budget, the Mountain View budget, budget rather, and the special education budget. The only one where you get a good apples-to-apples comparison is at the high school. People probably remember that from last time. The other thing I was going to mention is the superintendent talked about the components of the increase with about a million of it being tuition and/or transportation. I wanted to just clarify that the tuition is two different things. Special education tuition, what the increases there can be tied to are students who have moved in during the school year without a district placements that weren't budgeted in the current year budget, but we needed to budget for next year, and/or special education students who are in state custody, whose placement changed from a less expensive placement previously to a more expensive placement for next year, and we had a budget more money. So that's the special ed side of things. The other side of it is vocational tuition. Our students attend either SmithVoc or CTEC, depending on their field of study. And both of those vocational schools have more interest in students going next year than this year, and we had a budget additional money to accommodate that. And then the final point that I would make, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and you'll probably remember this too, is if you look at the components of the increase, the transportation as a result of more kids qualifying for the bus, and the tuition, that adds up to about a million dollars. Everything else represents only a 2.1% increase as compared to last year. So the fixed cost end of it, for which we have no control, is the lion's share of the increase. And I'll wrap up there and answer any questions that people might have.
Are there any questions about the budget or comments from the public? If you want to talk, or you want to make a comment about the budget, please indicate now. Very few people here.
Can I make, can I make one more point, just as a reminder?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was just thinking about this. What mitigates the increase in transportation in the district budget is the fact that the Finance Subcommittee, after we took the long, hard look at the reserve accounts, applied an additional $350,000 of choice revenue against their budget, against next year's budget as compared to their original plan. And all of that went against the transportation increase. So I just wanted to remind people of that. Typically, we've been applying between $400,000 and $800,000 usually of choice a year. This year, we'll be applying a million.
And if I could just remind folks that might be listening either tonight or at a later time, the presentation that I just had up is available on our website. It's been there under the School Committee page. That's where you can find it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. You know, I just want to say again, I don't know how you guys do this. I don't want to even pretend that I want to know how. But thank you all on the committee for taking care of all of this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a tremendous amount of work for the committee in a very compressed timeline, or a fairly compressed timeline. So I agree. I think they enjoy, deserve a lot of credit for their dedication to the task over those late winter months, mid to late winter months.
Well, and I just want to thank to the Dr. Leclerc's leadership team, all of the different principals and other directors involved, and yourself, Dale. Obviously, you guys do the lion's share. We get to just sort of review it and give feedback and have conversations. But the lion's share is definitely done by others. So thank you for all of the teamwork that goes into making this possible.
I, over the seven years that I've been here, I guess I could talk a lot tonight. I know, I know the clock is running, and there's a lot of stuff I want to say. But what I wanted to say is, over the seven years that I've been here, I feel like the leadership team have been very, become very, very good stewards of their site-based budgets, very good managers of it, and I think that forecasts very well for the success and ease of my successor in that they all do a very, very good job. The budget wasn't set up previously for them to do that easily, and it was restructured in a way that they've really taken ownership of it. So I think that's a great thing for the district, and I think it's a great thing for the new Director of Business Services.
It's all because of Dale. She keeps us in check.
Dale has done a phenomenal job. I've, since I started on the School Committee, I've been on the Finance Team, and Dale has straightened out our budget from what it was and the way it was almost impossible to understand in the past before Dale. And now it's, it's really easy. She'll take you through it, and you get it. So I thank you. All right, any other questions?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to the School Committee to approve this budget in full.
First, we have to close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we have, we have to open up. Now, it appears as though there is no one who would like to ask a question or comment. And it is 6:30, so people have had time to come on. So I think, let's take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. A second.
All right, Shannon?
Okay. Shannon Durham, hi.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle abstain.
You're abstaining from closing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Okay. Maren?
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Hey, you got your voice. Yay.
No, on my phone, my computer's completely broken now.
Oh dear. Oh, no. And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Okay, so we have closed the public hearing. We are going to open up the regular session. I don't believe we have to roll call in, but just for ha-has, let's just roll call in, start the regular session, and continue on with this meeting. So Shannon?
Shannon Durham, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren?
Goldstein here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, so do we have any announcements before we open up? No announcements? Okay, so we're going to again open up the public comment on any other thing that people would like to talk to us about. So I'm opening up public comment. And I don't see any indications. I'll give it about 30 seconds, and then we'll go on with our discussion of the budget. All right, so I am going to close public comment. Oh, wait a minute. All right. So I'll hold on. And all right, I just want to make sure there's no one who wants to make a public comment on anything else before I close. All right, I am going to close public comments, and we can open up the discussion of the budget. Is there any discussion? No questions, no comments. Okay.
Chair Committee, I recommend that we, that we accept the budget as proposed and pass it in full.
All right. Do we have a second?
Recording in progress.
Okay, there's Lori. I'm sorry, did you second Megan?
I didn't actually make a motion, I was just speaking to it, actually. I could make a motion now if we're ready to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so whatever was going on, it was, I thought you made the motion. Okay, good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget in full and provide it to the mayor's office and city council as outlined.
Maren, remember you have to say the actual figure.
Yeah, I was trying to look it up. Somebody else has it written for them, they can say it, but.
Yeah, I have it.
Eight, it's 18.
Yeah.
18,4.
460.
Five, 450. Five, 450,907.
I accept that amendment to my proposal.
Okay, so let's try that. Correct?
Correct, and I accept that amendment to my proposal.
All right, do we have a second?
Do you want to second it, Shannon?
I'll, I'll second, yes.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All right, here we go, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Mayor LaChapelle abstain.
Maren.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori? No, cannot hear you. Can you call in so that we can, yeah, call in so we can hear your voice? We can wait, we're not in a rush. All right, there you go, hold on. There. Lori, we'll wait for you to connect.
Sorry about that, I, I got the sound to hear what you were saying, but you could, I don't know what's going on with my computer, but aye, Lori Garcia, aye.
All right, thank you, and Cindy Kuzensky, aye. All right. Okay, so now for other. Is there any other that anybody needs to toss out there?
Well, I think it would just be good to announce for anybody who's watching this tonight. And maybe the mayor can confirm, I believe that is being, your budget is being proposed to city council at tomorrow night, Wednesday the 18th at 6:00 PM, is that correct?
Yes, but it will not be discussed.
Okay, so if there are parents or public or union members or anybody else that would like to speak on the budget, they are welcome and encouraged to come to public speak and present them their thoughts at that time during public speak. And then as follow-up to that, I believe that the finance committee is going to then be reviewing the school budget. And people are again encouraged to come and speak, public speak for the city finance subcommittee, and that is at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June the 2nd, if I have my dates correct.
If I could comment. One, the, that finance, none of the finance hearings have been set. I'm putting forth amendment, amendment for a proposed schedule, but I already heard there are some conflicts, so I'm not sure if it affects the school budget. Also, on the finance committee meeting, yes, there's public speak, but at the discretion of the chair, the conversation tends to be a little more conversational. So if there's a question midway through a presentation or something specific to a member of the committee, or myself, or the department head, the chair usually allows that question or, or questions with a dialogue that's outside of a specific agenda as long as it relates to the school or whatever department's budget that I propose.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I would just reiterate then that tomorrow night, public speak for city council, and then to, for anybody who's interested to want to attend the finance subcommittee, to check the website to be assured of that. But as of right now, it possibly might be June 2nd on Thursday night. So, but please attend, and we certainly encourage public to voice their support of schools, as many people do, and hope that that finance committee moves forward with the budget as we proposed.
Thank you. All right. Any other other? Our next meetings will be May 24th, and our last meeting for this school year will be June 14th. So, very exciting. Is there a motion to public speak closed quite a while ago, so we will not be able to open it up again? We're in our regular session, so. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Shannon, you're muted, but I think you were going to second?
I did, that's what I, that's, yes, I, I seconded.
Okay, all right, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Thank you, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Good night, goodbye.
Good night.